The fifth day of the first regular session of the 20th Congress will now come to order. The fifth day of the first regular session of the 20th Congress will now come to order. May we all rise for a moment of silent prayer. May we all rise for a moment of silent prayer. Chief Clerk, roll call. Chief Clerk, roll call.
Senator Alek, Senator Arvitos, Senator Figuerre, Senator Cooland, Plu Leader Harper, Senator Alek, Senator Arvitos, Senator Figuerre, Senator Cooland, Plu Leader Harper, Senator Conman, Vice Speaker Moses, Senator Ned, Senator Panuelo. Senator Conman, Vice Speaker Moses, Senator Ned, Senator Panuelo.
Aye, my.
Aye, my.
Senator Perman, Senator Romolo, Senator Urusmal, Senator Wally. Senator Perman, Senator Romolo, Senator Urusmal, Senator Wally. Speaker Semenah. Speaker Semenah.
Yes. Yes.
Mrs. Speaker, 30 members are present. Mrs. Speaker, 30 members are present.
We have called this morning, we can transact business, reading of the Journal, Plu Leader Harper. We have called this morning, we can transact business, reading of the Journal, Plu Leader Harper.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker, and good morning to you and all honorable members, as well as our staff Thank you, Mrs. Speaker, and good morning to you and all honorable members, as well as our staff and all those who are observing from the gallery. and all those who are observing from the gallery. Again, I move to dispense with the reading of the Journal. Again, I move to dispense with the reading of the Journal.
It's moved and seconded that with dispense with the reading of our Journal, those in favor It's moved and seconded that with dispense with the reading of our Journal, those in favor of the motion say yes, opposed no, motion carried, we now dispense with the reading of our Journal. of the motion say yes, opposed no, motion carried, we now dispense with the reading of our Journal. Next item, Chief Clerk. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Mrs. Speaker, we have Presidential Communications numbers 20-2 through number 20-6. Mrs. Speaker, we have Presidential Communications numbers 20 dash 2 through number 20 dash 6.
Make the assignments, Chief Clerk, next item. Make the assignments, Chief Clerk, next item.
Mrs. Speaker, for some Supreme Court communications, we do not have any. Mrs. Speaker, for some Supreme Court communications, we do not have any.
Continue on. Continue on.
Member communications, there are none, departmental communications, none, Mrs. Speaker. Member communications, there are none, departmental communications, none, Mrs. Speaker. Number nine or item nine, agency or governmental authority communications, there are none. Number nine or item nine, agency or governmental authority communications, there are none. State communications, none either, state Supreme Court communications, there are none. State communications, none either, state Supreme Court communications, there are none. Municipal or town communications, there are none, Mrs. Speaker, foreign government communications, Municipal or town communications, there are none, Mrs. Speaker, foreign government communications, also none. also none.
Order at the time, item 14, Standing Committee Reports, Chief Clerk. Order at the time, item 14, Standing Committee Reports, Chief Clerk.
Mrs. Speaker, for Standing Committee Reports, we should have a waiting list number 20-1. Mrs. Speaker, for Standing Committee Reports, we should have a waiting list number 20 dash 1.
Short recess. Short recess. Speaker. Speaker. 20 dash 01 be placed on the Standing Committee Report calendar for action, Plu Leader Harper. 20 dash 01 be placed on the Standing Committee Report calendar for action, Plu Leader Harper.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker, just to make sure that we're not violating any of our rules, Thank you, Mrs. Speaker, just to make sure that we're not violating any of our rules, I hereby move to suspend the rule that requires 24 hours before a report could be available to members. I hereby move to suspend the rule that requires 24 hours before a report could be available to members.
Seconded, it's moved and seconded that the relevant rules, specifically that rule requiring Seconded, it's moved and seconded that the relevant rules, specifically that rule requiring 24 hour waiting period for Standing Committee Reports be suspended at this point, those in favor 24 hour waiting period for Standing Committee Reports be suspended at this point, those in favor of the motion say yes, opposed nay, motion carried, that those relevant rules are suspended at this point. of the motion say yes, opposed nay, motion carried, that those relevant rules are suspended at this point. So let's forward on the motion to place, those in favor of the motion to place Standing Committee So let's forward on the motion to place, those in favor of the motion to place Standing Committee Report 20 dash 01, say yes, opposed nay, motion carried, Standing Committee Report number 20 dash 01 Report 20 dash 01, say yes, opposed nay, motion carried, Standing Committee Report number 20 dash 01 is now placed on the Standing Committee Report for action. is now placed on the Standing Committee Report for action. Chairman Figuerre. Chairman Figuerre.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker, I move that Congress adopts Standing Committee Report number 20 dash 01. Thank you, Mrs. Speaker, I move that Congress adopts Standing Committee Report number 20 dash 01.
Any second? Any second? It's moved and seconded that Congress adopts Standing Committee Report number 20 dash 01. It's moved and seconded that Congress adopts Standing Committee Report number 20 dash 01. Discussion, short recess. Discussion, short recess. Back in session, we're still on discussion of the Standing Committee Report 20 dash 01. Move for the previous question. Move for previous question, if there is no objection, discussion is closed. So let's forward on adoption of the report, those in favor of the adoption of Standing Committee Report number 20 dash 01, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed nay, motion carried, Standing Committee Report number 20 dash 01 is adopted by Congress. Next report, Chief Clerk.
There are none, Mrs. Speaker.
Okay. Next item.
Item 15, Special Committee Reports, there are none.
Next item.
Item 16, Assignment Measures and Communications, we have a referral sheet number 20 dash 2.
Chairman and members, committees take a look at the referral sheet number 20 dash 2. I believe there may be some corrections, and Chief Clerk take note of that, make those corrections. Next item.
Mrs. Speaker, item 17, Unfinished Business, there are none.
Next item.
Item 18, Bill Calendar, Mr. Speaker, the first bill is CP number 19 dash 20 01 for 20 dash 01 for second reading. CP number 19 dash 20 dash 01 is a bill for an act to amend Public Law number 19 dash 89 as amended by Public Laws numbers 19 dash 94, 19 dash 127, 19 dash 151, and 19 dash 159 by amending section 6 thereof to change the allotted funds previously appropriated therein for the purpose of funding public projects and social programs in the state of Chuk and for other purposes.
Speaker, short recess. We're back in session. Chairman Figuerre, you want to make a motion to defer?
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker, I move that Congress defer action on Congress Bill 20 dash 01 to tomorrow's calendar.
It's moved and seconded that Bill number 20 dash 01 be deferred to tomorrow's calendar for action. Those in favor of the motion say yes, opposed nay, motion carried, the bill is deferred to tomorrow's calendar for action, Chairman Figuerre, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker, I move to withdraw and place Congress Bill 20 dash 06 on the Bill Calendar for action.
It's moved and seconded that Congressional Bill number 20 dash 06 be withdrawn from Chairman Figuerre's committee and placed on the Bill Calendar for first reading action. Chairman, I mean, Plu Leader Harper, you have any motion to suspend? I mean, rules to suspend.
Yeah, I move to suspend any relevant rule that may impede our action on the said bill.
It's moved and seconded that the relevant rules that might impede our action on the motion be suspended, those in favor of the motion say yes, opposed nay, motion carried, the rules, relevant rules are suspended, let's forward on the motion by Chairman Figuerre. Those in favor of the motion to withdraw and place CP number 20 dash 06 on the Bill Calendar for action, say yes, opposed nay, motion carried, CP number 19 dash 206 is withdrawn and placed. Chairman Figuerre, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker, move for the passes of the bill, said bill on first reading.
It's moved and seconded that Congress pass on first reading CP number 20 dash 06, Chief Clerk, read the title.
Mrs. Speaker, CP number 19, I mean, sorry, 20 dash 06 is a bill for an act to amend Public Law number 19 dash 170 by amending section 2 thereof to change the use of funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects. therein to fund public projects and social programs in the state of Yap and for other purposes.
There you have it, discussion. Any discussion, yes. Chairman Figuerre?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker, and I beg again the indulgence of the Congress to help with the passage, Yap delegation to pass this bill to assist our students from Yap Catholic High School who will be participating in, well, I don't know what that is, but it's called robotic competition in Washington, D.C. They're going to be representing the FSM, the fund that we're taking out of our public project from our youth programs in Yap for the summer. It's not enough, but it's, we're also trying to find money elsewhere, so if anybody's generous enough, they can contribute to this good cause. The students, the students are big in that competition. It's a highly competitive program in Washington this year in July. It's kind of urgent, so I beg for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Figuerre, short recess. Congress back in session, we're still in discussion of the Bill 20-06, any further discussion? If none, there's no objection, discussion is closed. Let's vote by oral call of members.
Senator Alek. Senator Alek. Senator Aratos. Senator Figuerre. Senator Kooland. Floor Leader Harper. Senator Conman. Vice Speaker Moses.
Aye, my.
Senator Ned. Senator Panuelo.
Aye, my.
Senator Perman. Senator Romolo. Senator Orsmael. Senator Wally. Speaker Semina.
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, 30 members voted for.
For that reason, CP number 20-06 has passed Congress on first reading. Next bill.
Mr. Speaker, we have Functional Act number 19-163 for repassage of certain items which the President item feed out.
Chairman Figuerre?
Move for the repasses of the said bill, act.
It's moved and seconded that Congress re-pass Congressional Act number 19-163. That's a repassage of a FIDO, and we need at least three votes of the delegations. Discussion. If none, let's vote by delegation.
State of Chuk, Chairman Aratos.
Floor Leader Harper, ask the vote.
Yes.
Floor Leader Harper. State of Bombay, Chairman Panuelo.
Aye, my.
State of Kuchai, Chairman Wally. State of Yap, Chairman Orsmael. Mr. Speaker, four states voted in favor.
The motion for repassage has been adopted by Congress. The item Fidos have been overrated. Next bill.
There are none, Mr. Speaker.
Next item.
Item 20, Introduction of Bills and Resolutions.
I think it's item 19.
Sorry, yes, item 19, Resolution Calendar, there are none, Mr. Speaker.
Is there a reason you want to skip that? Next item. So next item, if there's no resolution. Item 20.
Item 20, Introduction of Bills and Resolutions.
Members, if you have any measure to introduce, please pass them on to Chief Clerk. Next item.
Mr. Speaker, item 21, Miscellaneous Communications, we have one and it's number 20-1.
Assign that, Chief Clerk. Next item. Miscellaneous Business. Do you have Miscellaneous Business members? Chairman Panuelo, you have the floor.
Speaker, thank you. Good morning to you and members, those who are observing from the gallery. Mr. Speaker, I thought it would be a good thing to share with the members of Congress who are not members of the RND Committee about oversight hearing this morning with our NORMA authority. You will recall, members will recall that in the revenue protection that we have received earlier from the Department of Finance, it showed that collection of anticipated revenues from our fisheries fees was going to be less by 10 million, and that precipitated the concern by members, and it led to the calling of an oversight hearing with NORMA this morning. And I'm pleased to share with you, Speaker, and members, that the news is much brighter than it was earlier. We wanted to hear it from the horse's mouth, and Executive Director was there to report that he has great confidence that, and we will submit information that will substantiate this, but the sheet that he presented with the RND Committee on the revenue, projected revenue for fisheries is going to be up to the amount of 62.5 million, Mr. Speaker, and that's only from fees from per se, per se operations that they have signed agreements with. And in addition to that, he is reported to the RND Committee that it can be more than that, but he is confident that we can collect 63.5 in total for the revenue protection. That's the news I want to share, Mr. Speaker, and I want it to be on record because I think the understanding is that he will communicate that information to the Department of Finance so that when there is further update on revenue protection from our Department of Finance, that that can be something that takes, is taken into account. He's reported some other information, but I will leave it at that. Committee can share with you later or with other members who want to know more. And also, that concluded this morning, nearly concluded budget review for the NORMA office. The only remaining areas is the subsidies and grants and capital improvement, CIB projects that has to do with projects with NORMA. So I'm happy to report to you about a little bit of brighter news on our revenue protection from our fisheries, which is a major source, Speaker, and we hope that we can be looking at some confidence in putting more money into our FSM trust fund, which has reached over 100 million now. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Panuelo, for that piece of, maybe we can call it good news on the revenue side, and thank you for finishing up portions of your budget review. I appreciate that, given that RND Committee is one of the biggest committees in terms of jurisdictional responsibilities. And I will, I think I know who should go next. Chairman Orsmael?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Just point of information on the issues brought by Chairman of RND relating to the revenue perception. In between lines, I try to understand the difference between what was reported by Finance and what transpired during that committee meeting this morning. So can I be informed by the good chairman as to the difference between what was projected, submitted to Congress, and what was reported during this morning RND committee meeting?
Please, Chairman Panuelo, enlighten our good chairman.
Yeah, Speaker, I think we know that the facility scheme that NORMA negotiates on our behalf with distant fishing nations, including domestic and local companies, is an ongoing thing. I think that's what major difference that they've completed most of our days, and that account for the increase. And I know they were being conservative on that earlier revenue projection that made it less than what we heard this morning. So based on the report, others from the RND Committee can supplement, but my understanding is that they have reached more agreements with the fishing nations that gives them confidence. And I said confidence because they've signed agreements which they've reported to be at 6.62.5 million expected revenues for the FSM National Government. They reported some difficulties on our local fishing companies, but that's something that's worked out in terms of revenue. And also, they increased a little bit from last year on the fees that they also give to our domestic, local and domestic fishing boats. The anticipated increase that can possibly reach 63.5 is from other fishing agreements other than per se fishing. So 62.5 is strictly from per se operations and agreements that we've signed with our fishing partners. So that's what I can supplement with additional information, but we have asked them that they provide the information, and I think more would be available for members' information. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Panuelo, short recess.
Yeah, Speaker, I was trying to...
Congress back in session. Thank you, Chairman Panuelo, for the import on miscellaneous business. Any other miscellaneous business from members? Speaker. Yes, Floor Leader Harper, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. During this miscellaneous, I would like to ask the intelligence of this Congress to recognize a constituent of mine who is also observing this morning session. This individual was also a schoolmate of ours, myself and Senator Orsmael, and this guy used to be a fast runner in Chuk, so may I ask that we recognize the presence of Ignacio Somoy? Let's give him a round of applause. And since we're so grateful to all the other observers for observing our session this morning, let me also ask that we just give them recognition by giving them a round of applause.
Thank you, Floor Leader Harper. The Congress joins you in welcoming those citizens of ours and the interested parties, persons who are also observing our session this morning. Speaker. Any other miscellaneous business? Yes, Chairman Kooland, you have the floor.
Thank you, Speaker. Before I touch the communication from President 2003, I would like to also recognize two gentlemen in our gallery this morning. They are the official, Chuk state officials. Frank Chernymy is the political scientist for the governor and also advisor on women affairs, and Keiji Joseph is the deputy director of the agriculture. He still needs a confirmation, so please, let's give them a round of applause. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Chairman Kooland. That part of your position on women affairs keeps changing on the different staff of the governor's office, and I wish that Mr. Joseph confirmation. Any other miscellaneous business? Speaker. Yes, Chairman Perman?
Thank you, Speaker. Good morning to you, vice speaker, members, and all that are observing our session this morning. Mr. Speaker, I have a very huge concern regarding Presidential Communication number 20-03. There's FSM TCNI is going around with this, their consultants, and maybe, I guess, people from World Bank trying to meet every member, each member separately instead of the entire members, asking us to pass a bill. And when the question was raised that if Telecom know anything about it, they, I don't think Telecom knows about this bill because I actually followed it up, and that's what concerns me. They're trying to ask Congress to pass a thing to the bill without letting other parties involve, and I'm wondering if World Bank actually know what they're doing too. If they're not telling Telecom what they're trying to do, is World Bank on board? Is World Bank is asking this group not to make sure that Telecom is not part of this, what they're trying to negotiate, and that's the concern I have. So I know they're going to meet Kuchai during lunch, and they'll be trying to lobby for this bill, and please, let's, and I think us all members should come together and really look at the bill very seriously because it's the future. What decision we will make, for sure, it will affect the future of FSM. Telecom, that actually belongs to the people of FSM. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Perman, for bringing up an important issue. That communication is from the president, and we will take it in the course of our business. We will do, of course, oversight hearings and all those things in our legislative process, and we will probably call FSM Telecom, World Bank, and all these entities that are stakeholders in this entire field.
in this entire bill, because I think that's important to our nation. You, who was Chairman Kula, you...
Thank you, Speaker. Thank you. I respect my good chairman on health for his concern. Mr. Speaker, as a chairman of the TNC Committee, I recommend that members, including the speakers, I schedule the meeting to discuss these questions and concern in regards to the OAE Andrew Bill. So I suggest that we do the meeting tomorrow at 8:30. So our legal council will educate us. Thank you, Speaker. Before the hearing.
Thank you, Chairman Kula. It looks like the ball is already started rolling, things. And I think because of the time constraints for the ongoing projects for, I think, Yap and Chuk, I think it's good that we take this on as quickly as possible. Okay? Any other, and members take note of the time and place of the meeting suggested by Chairman Kula. Okay? Any other miscellaneous business? Miscellaneous business? Chairman Ursimov, I failed to read your mind this time.
I know. I covered my brain up. Just a couple of issues, Mr. Speaker. First, before I came to this session, I was informed by the state of Yap for our public projects, most of which, about 99.9%, of which, the governor of the state of Yap is the Alati. I was informed through the staff of the Department of the Office of Planning and Budget that when they submitted waiver on bid, they were informed that they had to send request to President's Office in Palikar to approve it. This is a new twist into what has been the practice and what I thought was the law and laws and regulations of this government. This morning, I heard a different part of it, I mean, different story. And like I said, either on the opening day or second day of our session, we should be congratulated for being a leader instead of just a follower. So I want our legal people to clarify. I know they have already indicated what they thought was the legal issue to me, but I want something in writing so I can share with the state of Yap what our legal people, or at least especially, most especially from the Department of Justice. Secondly, I'm hearing that, and this is in contradiction to my belief, that there are two equal branches of this government. There are three, but mainly two equal branches. There's the executive, and that the manager of the each branch takes care of his branch. In this case, for Congress, it's you, Mr. Speaker. Anything owned and by the Congress with CFSM label should be managed and taken care of by you. But then I heard that even our legal staff was stopped and his car was taken because he didn't have a valid national government license. I don't have any, and I'm announcing it. I do not have a national government license, and I'm driving one FSM license-plated vehicle in Yap and one CFSM vehicle. So they can come and take their car if they want, but they have to pay me the money that Congress pay for the vehicles. So these two issues, I want clarification on them. Do we follow their regulation? And can they stop us for lap and check if we have license when we're here for session? Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Ursimov. They seem to be different issues at different, in different places, but actually, we're seeing trend that is troubling. There seems to be an effort at consolidation of control in the executive branch, and I think the relevant committees need to really take deeper look into this, because just in last few sessions of the night in Congress, we actually passed laws which dealt with minor regulatory things that should not be the case. And it looks like we are still heading that way considering what's going on in both the AG D O J and Finance and the other place. And I'm sure effring should be emanating from the President's Office, which is the office controlling effring in the executive branch. And we are having a meeting this afternoon with D O J and Finance. Hopefully, that's, they're coming to our, with our own staff, and hopefully, in that meeting, we can clear up or resolve some of these matters that, and yours have been already noted by, I believe, our staff to be taken up. Okay? Any other... Yes, go ahead, Chairman Ursimov, still have the floor?
When a contract is entered into between an employee and the supervisor of that employee, governing his housing, his or her housing, and salary, does that and sign by Department of Justice and everybody else? Who, can anyone else outside of those entities decide how much that employee should be getting? Whether it should be lower than what is already entered into in the contract, and whether or not that employee should be getting housing?
I guess that's related to other issues that are already, that I let our staff take note of that to see if we can also address. Any further miscellaneous business?
Speaker.
Yes, Chairman Kula, you have the floor?
Thank you, Speaker. I agree with my good chairman on E, his concern in regards to the Alati. We have the infrastructure project for Chuk State. Our infrastructure for Chuk State has been stalled for six months, going to seven months. The problem is the D O J and the Finance, there is a discrepancy on the land issue. And, Mr. Speaker, I use the example for the sector grant, that when we share out our share, national share, we give it to the state, appropriation should be done in the state. No longer national government to appropriate that. And I also tell the Department of Justice that when we delegate the authority to the Alati, there they should be the one that administering the funding. And our project has been stalled because of this issue. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Kula. That's true with respect to the land purchase agreements for Chuk public use, those have been held up like for over half a year now, and simply because they're stuck with the Department of Justice, who claim that they should be the one doing the reviewing and approval of those, even though it is the governor who's the Alati of those funding. So I guess they're just related to what Chairman Ursimov has also raised. Okay? So any other miscellaneous business? If none, next item.
Announcement, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, we're on announcement. Chairman Wali?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. At 1:00 PM, one tomorrow afternoon, your Committee on External Affairs will have oversight with the department in the hearing room. This is regarding some of the issues that were raised while traveling to the embassies. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Wali. I believe the committee assignments have been officialized and distributed to all members, so make sure take note the members of EXAF of the announced hearing by Chairman Wali. Chairman Figueroa?
Yeah, I just got a message from somebody in Yap asking why Congress is giving money to some students when they have plenty money in the legislature. But I don't have answer to that. Anyway, may I ask the members of your Committee on Ways and Means to have 10 minutes meeting in the members' rooms right after this morning session?
Thank you, Chairman Figueroa. Members of Ways and Means, you are now clear since it's easier for that committee, it's based on chairmanship. You have 10 minutes, no more, right after session, so the main meeting of all members can proceed afterwards. Okay? Chairman Berman?
Thank you, Speaker. Two announcements. First, the first one is the Chairman of Ways and Means and I have agreed that we change schedules. So I'll be having the 2:30 to 4 o'clock on Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, and Ways and Means will be having the 4:00 to 5:30 or whatever from Monday, Wednesday, Friday. And the other one will be, there will be public hearing tomorrow, look at 2:30, Social Security and the nomination of Mr. Keller and other stuff for health. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Berman. Members, take note of the hearing tomorrow, 2:30, with nomination and other items for HSA. And you got tricked into the hearing time because now Chairman Figueroa doesn't have to pay for lunches. Chairman Romano?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Members of CHENCO, please look at the monitor for our upcoming hearing.
Thank you, Chairman Romano. Take note, members of CHENCO, keep track of our monitors for schedules of the CHENCO Committee. Chairman Panuelo?
Speaker, for your RND Committee, 8:30 Wednesday, we will continue the budget hearing for those offices under the RND Committee. We will finish off Norma's portion under grants and subsidies and CIP, and then move into the budget of, we have not issued a notice of hearing, but I believe it may be RND Department, which is the biggest, and so notice will confirm that today for the budget hearing on Wednesday, 8:30. So I invite the members of the committee to join. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Panuelo. Take note, members of CHENCO, looks, I mean, RND, looks like RND is moving full blast ahead for some reason. Yeah, thank you for that. That's good. Chairman Kula, announcement?
Thank you, Speaker. As I said earlier, that I request to all members, including our speaker, vice speaker, that tomorrow at 8:30, we will be having a meeting, only member discuss questions, concerns in regards to this bill. And we also have Thursday, same time, 8:30, hearing on this measure. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Kula. Take note, members of TNC and also all members of Congress are invited to join the committee in their meeting on the newly transmitted bill on telecom matters tomorrow and other things. Chairman Ursimov?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Your Committee on Education will have, will start its public hearing starting today at 1:00 in the hearing rooms. I also would request you, Mr. Speaker, to indicate to the staff and people responsible for the hearing room that it's very bad, because the lighting in there is not good. And as an old man, my earrings are getting bad, and the hearing, when it rains, is really, really lousy. But anyway, we will have the hearing there at 1:00. Five minutes into the meeting, we will finish reorganizing or organizing that committee, selecting vice chairman. And then the next 55 minutes, we will spend on oversight, any and all questions pertaining to education. After that 55 minutes, then we go into budget for one hour, and then we're done. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Ursimov. Yes, continues to be a challenge to work our hearing building into a perfect, you know, hearing place, so be patient with our staff. They will continue to work on accommodating our shortcomings, so to speak, or the shortcomings of the structure, the building itself.
Yes, Speaker, if I may supplement the request?
Still have the floor?
The restroom in there, the seat of, you know...
Short recess. Okay. Congress back in session. We're still on miscellaneous, I mean, announcement. Vice Speaker? Senator Ned? Senator Alec? Senator Coleman? Okay. Florida Harbor, announcement, and then your motion?
Thank you, Speaker. Before I make my usual motion, I'd like to ask our delegation, Chuk delegation, if we can just meet for a few seconds in my room, just to select our vice chairman on the delegation. So I now move that we stand in recess and come back at 10:00 AM.